Thank you, God, for the case for this in last session. Commissioner Jones, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for everything that you are. Father, help us today in our decision making and our understanding, God, to get our wisdom from you. Father, we thank you for the ability or to discern and decide today. Thank you for the privilege and honor it is, help us or to have discretion in everything we do, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Our duty to defy in the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda, the beating of resolution honoring Mr. Bevan Putnall.
Yes, Commissioners, with heavy heart, I have to read this resolution to you this morning, but with the resolution, I'll ask for the board to consider a few things. One, I'll read the resolution into the minutes here this morning, and with that, you can make a motion, if you would, authorizing the chairman's signature, adopting the resolution and authorizing the chairman's signature, and then us having thirty seconds of silence in honor of Mr. Bevan, and then also, long motion, is authorizing Commissioner William Massey, Bevan's family, and the commission of that district to attend the funeral services this morning on behalf of the county commission, because while that service has started, we'll probably still be in session. So with that, if I have your permission, I'll go ahead and read the resolution.
Go ahead.
Whereas the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the passing of Bevan Putnall on March thirtieth, 2019, and so does honor the life and legacy of Bevan Putnall by saying, whereas Bevan Putnall was born in Carabel, March thirteenth, nineteen forty-two, and lived a full seventy-seven years in the community, and whereas the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and the people of Franklin County were honored to have Bevan serve as a county commissioner for twenty years, from nineteen ninety-two to twenty-twelve, and whereas the Franklin County Board of County Commission acknowledges Bevan and his wife Patsy have three children, Rusty, Sherry, and Missy, seven grandchildren, multiple great-grandchildren, and at least one great-grandchild, and whereas Bevan loved the land and the waters in and around the Apalachicola Bay so much that he spent most of his life working in the seafood industry, and whereas Bevan not only worked on the bay, but his number-one priority was to protect the bay so that future generations could also work on the bay. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to recognize the legacy of Bevan Putnall and the services he made to family and community throughout his entire life, this resolution will be adopted the second day of April, 2019.
Page of the board.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, at your count, I'll ask Attorney Schiller to keep watch for the thirty seconds of silence.
We want to honor him, Bevan, by giving him thirty minutes, thirty seconds of silence, one minute.
Go ahead, sir.
Commissioner Massey, we tell the board, we tell the family we're sorry about the law. We will be praying for him. Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. That was approval of the minutes and paying of the county bills. Next on the agenda will be public comments. If there are any public comments.
I just want to say publicly, we welcome public comments. I'm sure many of you are here for an agenda of other reasons, but just want you to know that this commission does encourage public comment, and we want you not only to hear these words, but to transmit this encouragement to your friends and family who may want to come and talk with us in the future.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. It's not clear to me, was the board's last motion for the approval of the minutes, which would then lead to the payment of the bills, or was that done as a combination motion?
It was a combination. I left, I didn't say it, and I didn't read it out in the beginning, but it was a combination. Or you want me to go through the payment of the bills separate?
Yes, sir, I think we would do that. That would be consistent with how we've been running the meeting, sir.
Okay, based on the agenda, payment of the county bills.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sorry about that. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Rick Watson, Rock by the Sea Request.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Rick Watson. I'm here in my capacity as treasurer of Rock by the Sea. This is our thirteenth-year music festival. It's a charity that benefits children's charity. We have had the event at Harriet's, but it's not open, and we're moving the event to Doc Myers. I'd like to recognize Dan Myers, who's here, and also Beth Gosnell, who's president of Rock by the Sea. We have three hundred out-of-county guests coming, representing twenty-seven states and four foreign countries. We have thirty-one musical acts this year. One of the acts is the winner of American Idol, Nick Fratiani. We are children's, a charity for children's programs. We sponsor the Music as a Second Language at Carabel Library. We sponsor the summer reading program. We're going to sponsor for kids tag art, hurricane and fire relief, and the University of Florida Pediatric Cancer Center, and Camp Sunshine, among other charities. Over the course of thirteen years, we've raised and donated over three-quarters of a million dollars for these type charities. For several years, we've appeared before the commission to extend the hours Friday and Saturday. I believe the hours are listed in the motion there, and this year, we've requested the closing of the alley between Doc Myers and Resort Vacation Rentals, to set up the band there, and we talked to Resort, they had no problem with it. So we appreciate approval of this motion.
Page of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Bird.
And what is the date of this event?
May eighth through the twelfth.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda will be Department Director's Report, Mr. Howard Davis, Superintendent of Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners, how y'all doing?
Good morning, Mr. Howard.
We still continue on, got two or three islands, we continue on putting up the damage signs through the county, which we about finished up with St. George Island, which that was the worst damage that we had. Then we're going to leave there, move into Appalachia, and then East Point, which we have to call no cut, and no cut has to mark every sign before we touch them. And we continue on grading roads throughout the county, cleaning ditches, and as of last week, we started cutting grass, which is a month early, usually the end of April, early May before we start, so we'll be cutting grass throughout the county also.
But, Mr. Howard, did all, y'all have a problem getting the sand? I mean, was you able to get all of them?
Yeah, we got them all ordered. It just took a while to get them in, but we got them all ordered and built, so they ready.
Yeah, I heard on TV where they were behind on making a lot of them.
Yeah.
Behind the mellow, so.
Yeah. We got all our stuff, all, we got to just getting stuff up and replacing, you know, a lot of twisted poles. Lot of times, you can't tell the post is twisted, but underground, it's twisted, so we're having to replace the whole post, which is about forty, forty-five dollars a piece of a post, so. Yeah.
Get them replaced, FEMA pulled the re-
Yes, sir.
Replace them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody got anything else for, but the neighbors?
Mr. Chairman, just Howard, thank you very much for the great Caterpillar-sponsored fellowship last week. It was wonderful to meet you and your staff, and many of the staff of other county departments. It really worked out very well. A nice setting, too, I thought. And also, I wanted to thank you on behalf of the folks at Landarc Village. You had, your crew had, I think, actually reopened a completely closed ditch on the south side of their boat storage area. I understand you discovered the ditch was blocked by a fifty-five-gallon drum barrel.
Yeah.
The folks are very thrilled about that now, that you found that and taking care of that.
We got all that cleaned and also put, I want to say, three different pipes on Franklin.
Yes.
It's good. Causing flooding issues, so.
And the pipe center now providing complete access.
Yeah, so we check bought the pipe, and we put them in, boy.
That's good. Oh, that's good.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Howard, did we ever find anything out about what you brought last time, the discussion about doing some kind of grant to get culvert pipes? Have we found anything else about that?
Alan had brought it up, which I don't know if Michael-
It might be too quick.
About some kind of grants, which he said Appalachia, you couldn't get the grant for Appalachia, but maybe East Point and Landarc, and Carabel places, I think, might could get it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just all that, yes.
Anything else for Mr. Navy? Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a good one, thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Funda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Nothing to report, other than just letting you know all, day of ball start this weekend.
It actually starts Friday, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Funda?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there any way y'all, we, I've been giving reports of the ball hitting people on the other field, and is there internet netting over there, or any way y'all can put something out for protection?
We can, we addressed the issue at Roman Park with some netting. We can, is it DW getting complaints from?
Well, we laughed again where y'all played it.
Yeah, the Roman. We did put a net up, yes.
Yeah. I guess it need to be up on all of them, really, if, you know, if we can, see what you can do better than, yeah.
Okay.
Because people be in the stands, or you know, I don't know, they said that one come from another field, not the field they were sitting behind.
Right.
So.
That's our ball. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We'll check it out.
If one of them free kick, then.
Right.
See what we can do better.
Okay.
Funda, it might be that instead of netting, like, I mean, behind the fence, it might need to go in front of the fence, like down the baseline. If it can go out five feet or so, it might keep the ball, if it's anywhere close to the fence. Usually if it goes up, it's not going to go up and go back, it's going to go in an angle, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, because especially in Carabel and Appalachia, the concession stands so far away from the fence anyway. If you tried to do it like you do East Point, you'd have netting literally everywhere. That probably works.
Right.
Just a thought.
Okay.
Whatever you can do, you know it's better. I don't know.
Okay.
You the man in that. I don't know how they set up. I seen them gun on some pills when I was out west, but how they do it, I don't know.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, this, Amish today said was a great success. We had about sixty-seven tons come in.
Sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. So we got three more to go.
Yeah. I mean, the people cleaning up.
Right.
Help us out.
That's right.
That's good.
That's it. Everything got running pretty smoothly.
Okay, any, any commissioning got anything for Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Okay, thank y'all.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Burnell, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do not have any action items. We did find out late Friday afternoon that we, we have actually an obligated project. C-30 A West has been obligated by FEMA, so it's a small project, so that money should be moving towards us pretty quickly.
Let me ask the question. Michael, I guess why Pam, Senator Monfort offered a call and said about that, um, emergency management project they having to get FEMA reimbursement back quicker, did y'all-
Yes, sir.
Get anybody, did y'all send anybody there?
Actually, that's why Mr. Pierce isn't here right now. He's up in Tallahassee at the moment, attending that meeting. I'm sorry, should have announced that earlier in the meeting. I was distracted, but yes.
I know I had talked to him, and he was going to get back, but I guess he didn't have time to let me know.
Yeah, we started working, you got that call, you called us, we started working.
That's it?
I got one thing.
Mr. Chairman.
On this Alert Franklin, these re-entry tags, I'd like, I'd like the county to advertise that in the newspaper, making all the citizens aware of what, this was a big issue during the event, with people not being signed up to Alert Franklin, because I know my phone was steady going off, and a lot of people, if you remember, the crowd filled the room up, saying they didn't get no information. If they'd have been signed up to Alert Franklin, they would have got a lot of information. So I'd like that advertised, if it's okay with Ms. Burnell-
Yes, sir.
And the rest of the board.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to have us advertise those two paragraphs, about, one about Alert Franklin, the other about the re-entry tag, to, once again, make it public aware that you have to be signed up to get these alerts, and they'll come straight to your phone, and you're more aware, because during an event, you didn't have any power, so your radio station wasn't putting anything out, the newspaper don't come out but once a week, and if you're not signed up, then you don't get up to the date, up minute alerts about what's going on during an event such as a hurricane, or the oil spill, or any other catastrophe we may have hit us, so I'd like to have that advertised. I'll put that in form of motion.
Sir, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Oh, you want on the radio, too? I mean, a lot of people don't get the paper.
If, if possible.
Yeah, I, if you don't mind, I have Whitney call Tress, and then she, let Tress say exactly how we want us to be done, and we'll, we'll do the advertising.
Okay.
Newspaper, radio, and the website.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously. Anybody else got anything for? Mr. Navy? Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Lovestream, Extension Office Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just have one item for you this morning, and it relates to our extension facility project. We did complete the bid process. We had one bid submitted for the project. It was about four hundred and fifty dollars outside of budget that we had committed for the project, so our architect actually went back and worked with the contractor, and they value engineered some of the materials in there, just to get that project within budget. I also placed a call to the Department of Agriculture, person who has been working with us on that grant, Mr. Craig Christ, and he affirmed that that would be considered a competitive bid, even though it was only one bid, because the contractor had no way of knowing that he would be the only bidder, and it meets the state standards for a competitive bid. So I guess I'm here just to ask board approval to move forward with that contractor, and ask them to submit a contract for our consideration and signatures, to get some work started.
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute. One, how do we do this when they ain't get but one bid, sir, Mr. Schiller?
Well, I think that was the reason of having staff check with the agency providing the grant monies, to make sure that they were satisfied with the procedures, and if I heard correctly, although I didn't get the name of the contractor, the state has blessed the process, so to speak, in terms of only receiving one bid, so if the state agency providing the money is satisfied, then I think we can accept that and move forward, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The money's actually housed within the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. That's the agency that usually moves money through in grant form to extension office projects, so when the legislature approved the funding, that's whose budget it was put within, and that's the agency that we have a contract with from the Board of Commissioners to that entity for this project.
Who got the actual contract?
Pardon?
Who was the contractor?
Who was the contractor?
Oh, it's Oliver Sperry is the name of the contractor. They're based in Tallahassee, I believe, and they have worked on other projects down here with the architectural firm, too, that we've contracted with, Doug Schuler, Barnet, Franzak, and Schuler, and Associates, it's a lot of names. So they, he's been satisfied with the work that they've done on projects down here in Appalachia Cola before, and getting any bids for this project was, was a success, I think, because contractors are really hard to come by right now, and we did do process, put the announcement out, the architect actually directly contacted four or five contractors that have worked here before, too, and that was the only one that submitted a bid for the project.
Okay.
And they are in budget, correct?
They are.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
That's all I have for you today. If you have some questions.
Anybody got anything for? Mr. Lovestream? Keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. John Solomon, TDC Director, Administrative Report.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm John Solomon, TDC Director. I have a short report, but also have a couple action items on there for the Board of County Commissioners today. The first, the collections report, the January two thousand and nineteen collections were fifty-two thousand, sixty-three dollars and forty-six cents. This is a six hundred and seventy-four dollar and ninety-five cent increase over January two thousand and eighteen. This is also the highest collection in the month of January for the TDC. Website activity, we had thirty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight web hits, that's up eight percent in the month of February two thousand and nineteen, from last year's February. The first item I have on my, a report for board action, is the Franklin County TDC was awarded the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar full reimbursable grant from Visit Florida. This grant was submitted under Visit Florida's Hurricane Michael Tourism Recovery Grant. We submitted our Open for Business campaign. The grant's purpose is to remarket the hurricane-affected areas. The submission was specific on how and where the grant could be used, and it has a list of the, where the breakdown is for the hundred and seventy-four thousand, and also a copy of the grant in your packets today. The TDC Board also approved that since all parts of this campaign have to be paid by June first to file for the reimbursement from Visit Florida, to have the bills paid when invoices are received. Additional documentation will be presented to finance when it becomes available. In addition, to allow flexibility in categories and the fact that ad buys are typically estimates, the TDC Board approved, if needed, to allow it to five thousand dollars over the grant amount per category from the original promotional budget for any overruns, and this is for the purposes of this grant only. And to update a little bit of that, pretty much everything is already together, and doesn't look like there's going to be any overruns at all, so, I mean, it's a good gesture that wasn't asked, but the board thought it might be appropriate, but it looks like everything's going to run under the hundred and seventy-four thousand that's reimbursable to the county and the TDC.
Page of the board.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bird. Well, that'll free up some more money.
Yes, sir, some of the things we have in the grant were already budgeted items in the promotions budget, so those items will be able to be used for promotions of Franklin County in that budget category instead of, one of the things was the Trip Advisor that the previous administration had approved and adopted, and the other was the Visitor Guide that was, has been worked on for a year or two, and it is complete now. So those two items total up almost sixty thousand dollars that goes back into availability of the budget for promotions this year.
Good. This is really a flash grant in many ways. You, you're, you're in this for basically ninety days, is that what I'm seeing? And you've got a hundred and seventy-four thousand to account for, and if I understand it, you'll have to have all your bills paid by June first?
Yes, sir, we have to have them paid by June first, and the reason that is, we have to have everything to the state by June fifteenth, and being the way the county commission cycle works, we have to get them in before that first meeting, so we can make sure that those are paid and sent to the vendors, so that way they cash the check, because it's just like with the TDC for reimbursement, we have to have a copy of the canceled check, the invoice, everything else, and then they will reimburse at all lump, instead of pie bill.
And Aaron, you facilitate the payment of those bills, is that how that's done?
Reason you have to do that is because of the new budget starts July one for the state.
Yes, sir, they-
So you're trying to get this in and get it paid before-
Yes, sir, they have, the budget cycle ended by the, in June, everything, even the grant, everything had to be at least started by June first to be eligible for this grant.
That's good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
All right, the next thing is not a, but it was one something I wanted to bring up, the TDC Board. Myself and Tana Kendrick from 2K Web Group presented the TDC Board with a survey development that we can have with the TDC and throughout the county to get more information of our, on our visitors, and where they're coming from, and things like that. So the TDC Board approved the development of a survey system to be used when the county had events, visitor centers, and everyday use in the towns and beaches. This survey will gather information from our visitors, like where they're from, why they came, et cetera. There will also be questions that reference what they expect to spend in certain categories, such as food per day, shopping. This survey will help the TDC better streamline advertising, as well as the information can be used to show economic impact of tourism. This program will be a permanent program to run continuously for our TDC. Our vendors, 2K Web Group, are currently developing the software. This will also, with the information that we receive from this survey, it's continuous, it's, it's a living thing that grows each time we do another survey, but we'll also at each event in cycle, we can actually have a document showing y'all and the public, you know, where people are coming from, when they're booking their trips here, and how much they're spending at our local businesses, which, you know, helps with the TDC and the county, so we can know what's being spent on tourism, you know, in the county, and also help get businesses gain when they need employees, when they need to, what products may be selling, so, you know. what products may be selling, so, you know, it just helps the economy in a whole, for everybody.
Well, John, Mr. Solomon. After the storm, you know, our neighbors to the west, they got hit pretty hard, so that, is that increasing us?
Um, so far, it has looked like it, yes, sir. We have been up percentages every collection since the storm, except for the month of October, of course, when we were pretty much closed. Every month since then has been an increase in tourism over last year. The last two months, on, that we have reports on January and December, that was the two highest months ever recorded for our Franklin County TDC in those two months. So it seems to be, yes, sir, that we are resulting from that effect, that they staying over here. The next item I have is a board action, the Caribou Chamber of Commerce, TDC representative. The Board made a motion asking the Board of County Commissioners to accept the recommendation by the Caribou Chamber of Commerce for Louis Chrissy to be the representative on the TDC Board.
Page at the ball.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pierce.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or no?
Thanks, Aaron, he apologizes, he called me this morning for not being here, his wife had car trouble in Tallahassee, or he would've been here for the meeting. The next item is also a board action. The Board approved the usage of the hundred and twenty thousand set aside in the budget to use for gathering estimates of the cost for construction of the facilities of the Saint George Island Restrooms.
Good, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Uh, you just using a portion of this?
Yes, sir, it's, and Commissioner Jones, with the chairman, said he would get together, and then they would vote on, you know, how much it would be, because we don't, didn't know the cost at that time.
We don't know the cost yet.
So moved.
What we're talking about is the, last year in the budget, there was a hundred and twenty set aside for the restrooms on the island. This year in the current budget, there's a hundred and twenty set aside, we're just talking about using those set aside funds, a portion of them, to get a new cost estimate.
So you want a cost estimate from the engineers, what you're asking for?
Correct, yes, sir.
Oh, I thought it sounded like you wanted bids to see what goes-
No, to cost estimates, yes, sir.
So moved.
And do various good before you-
Yep. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pierce. Second by Commissioner Jones. Just to get the cost estimate, not to do the work.
That's right.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or no?
Thank you. It's all of my report, except for the next scheduled board meeting is April tenth at two PM at the East Point Visitor Center. That concludes my report for the TDC.
Okay. And anybody got anything for TDC purpose with Mr. Solomon?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
What about this volunteer?
I'll step back and-
Change hats.
Yeah, change hats.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. John Solomon, National Volunteer Week Resolution.
Uh, yes Commissioners, John Solomon, I'm not here representing the TDC, or representing the Chamber of Commerce, or the Florida Seafood Festival, or the Williams Hospital Foundation. I'm here just representing volunteers in our county. I know I've came here multiple times, asking for the county to recognize our volunteer workforce that we have in our county and what we do. I realized a long time ago that somebody had to be the volunteer to volunteer, to come up and ask for thanking of the volunteers, and, and somebody needs to do it. This year especially, when after the hurricane hit, the way that the community came together and just opened up their doors, their refrigerators, their food, everything in this community was just amazing. And it just shows the power of what volunteers can do in our community. And I know Mr. Marone has the resolution, I do not, so. I'll have to get them, yes, sir. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, National Volunteer Week, April seventh through the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize to take action that changes the world. And whereas individuals and communities are the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas during the week of April seventh to the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, all over the nation, service projects will be performed, volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas our country's volunteers, volunteer force of sixty-three million is a great treasure. And whereas in two thousand eighteen, there was reported sixty-three million volunteers, they average thirty-two point one volunteer hours per person, per year, which comes to seven point nine billion hours of service, the equivalent of a hundred and ninety-five billion dollars. A volunteer saves on average of twenty-four sixty-nine an hour for the organization it volunteers for. Whereas in October two thousand eighteen, Hurricane Michael made landfall in our area. Many men and women of this community gave themselves by volunteering to help their neighbors. We, the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, would like to thank all of our community volunteers. Now therefore, we, the Franklin County Commission, do hereby proclaim April seventh to the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, National Volunteer Week in Franklin County, and also urge our fellow citizens to volunteer in Franklin County. Also, we urge others to recognize those who serve by tirelessly sharing their time and talent with those in need. This resolution is adopted by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners this second day of April, two thousand nineteen.
Page at the ball.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by both of them, Commissioner Pierce and Commissioner Burke. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman. You know, John, there was an expression in that resolution that talked about, where you just said, giving of oneself. And then I, I heard you say that the average savings to a volunteer organization is about almost twenty-five dollars an hour, in terms of realized income. And I just wanna, I, I know the spirit of our commission is how much volunteers are appreciated in this community. And I'm very happy that you're doing this, and I hope that it'll transmit to more than just some inkling paper there, that there's something we can do and bond. And I particularly, one who needs to get out of the way of himself, oftentimes appreciates the volunteerism and recognition. And if there's anything that I can do as a Commissioner, and I'm sure our guys here feel the same way, let us know, to make this week for you very special.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say something, John, I really like this resolution, thank you for taking time to do it. I can tell you though, this, and I'm not trying to change the resolution, I just feel like something needs to be said. This, things that happened during Hurricane Michael, the way that people gave of their self, their time, their commitment, really actually began with the East Point wildfire last year. There's so much going on this year, I, I for one, I don't usually say stuff like this, but I was glad to see twenty nineteen come. I had enough of twenty eighteen, but thank you for the resolution, and for what it means to our volunteers, of which I am one, and so are people on this board.
Yes, sir.
I hope, hope and pray that this year be a better year. Because we went through, we went through a lot. Hopefully that was the hundred years done, that it'll repeat them. But. Ready for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass or no?
Thank y'all very much Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marone? Your resolution back, sir.
Need to sign that, oh. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marsha Johnson, Clerk of the Court.
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you ma'am. Do I need to sign that? Okay, let's take a break.